To the Republic of which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, city. This is the second meeting of the regular call testimony. And like I said, everybody, welcome to the meeting. Let's get some progress done. Chief and staff, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Let's begin.
We have a clerk call.
Madam clerk, will you please call? I do apologize. Good to see you, madam clerk.
This is St. Columbia. Dr. Miller, Mr. Messina, Mr. Etherly, Ms. Miller. I have two absent for present.
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council, members of the administration, general public, and to our handy assistants that's helping us conduct this meeting. We just concluded a public hearing on part of our water project. So we could just take a moment to hear from our engineer or our grant writer on the public hearing, the reason for, the fact that there was no objection and how the project is going to go forward from this point forward. Mr. Wild.
Well, I'll try to give you the best, try to consolidate it into something that doesn't take all night long. But this is probably the first step of a process. And Ms. Mills really should probably be answering to this more than me because she's the one that's been dealing with, with the funding agency on all this. You're going through the process that you normally go through on any bond issue. You have to have a public meeting so the public can come in and tell you they agree, don't agree, so you can make your decision. The next step will be an ordinance in Attorney Valley. Correct me if I get off, offline here, but the next step will be an ordinance that you'll have to pass that will allow the bond council to move forward with closing what will be the first of more than likely multiple loans. Now, you've got a certain amount of money over at ARRC. Eleven million of it is loan and the rest is three, three point two five million, seven five, three point two five is loan. And then there's a nine million, nine point seven five is what is, is called forgiven. It's a loan, but they forgive, so it's, it doesn't have to be paid back. And they're going to require you to go into the eleven million loan portion first before you can start getting into the forgiven amount. But what this first loan is going to be for, so we can get going with the planning. Now, you've got, don't forget that, that the main purpose of all of this is in response to the Health Department consent order. The Health Department put you under a consent order saying they want to seize the action by the council and the city to stabilize the water system on both sides. And so they made this money available. So this is going to be the first loan that allows us to, to get started on preliminary engineering, planning, investigation, surveys, and some of the grant administration. Now, from this, we will begin identifying more specifics about the individual projects. You've got four areas that you're going to be addressing. Production, which is another new well. Treatment, which is improvements that need to be made to both treatment plants. Both of them are, are very dilapidated because of age. Distribution, we all know the story there, you know, lines that break, you know, you know, just chronic breakage of small diameter lines primarily. And then storage, and that's your, your tanks, you know, your water tanks all need to be painted, repaired, rehabbed. And so that's, we're going to be addressing those four major items. And those are the four major items that Attorney Valley's response to that consent order had in a long range plan. These are the things we're going to do, the percentages, the priorities. And then I broke that down into an even more specific inter-office memo to the mayor with more specifics on which component we'll do first. But what this first loan, what you just did, what the public meeting was about, was the first loan that allows me to get started with pulling all this together so that we can start moving forward on the higher priorities. Mostly the treatment plants and the distribution. And then we'll work through the rest of it. And as we go and identify these projects, then you'll be, we'll be having to come back to you for additional loans for the specific amounts of work. This is only going to be for engineering and grant administration. The next loan will be when we get far enough down the road that we will actually start borrowing the money to go to construction for the distribution lines, the treatment plants, and things like that. So you'll have additional loans as we go down the road.
So how long would it take us to get to the construction part of this?
I, I'm hoping, I'm hoping within about six months, you know, that, like I said, we've got a lot to try to pull together to, you know, and then start down the specific paths. Distribution, treatment plants, got to get in those treatment plants, see what the highest priority things that need to be done at the treatment plants, which lines and, and say, Rose and I corresponded, which lines need to be done first. We're also going to be doing, starting the work on the DRA grant, which has already been approved and executed. And we're going to be starting the work on that, which will actually be very similar, will be kind of the launching platform for what this project will eventually be. But we're going to get started on it first because it's ready to go, and it was a full grant.
In some more exciting news, as well as to go along with that. The, the governor has announced that she, that they have some more money that they will be sending this area for water and sewer. So we're, we're looking for Ms. Mills if she can to tap into that as well.
Any other questions?
Mr. Wild, thank you so much, and Ms. Mills, thank you. But I, every dime we spend, you ought to make sure that the council and the general public know all this money went to water, wastewater and all these things. We want to make sure we keep the public informed on every dime of this money. Because you know how this community can get, but we want to keep them informed that dollars are going where they're supposed to go for this water. So I just want to make sure that we keep the public informed on that. Thank you, thank you, madam, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You have a question?
Over in water, which one? It's one of mine. Those who are not taking your rural water course on water, that there still is a need to do so. Their place emphasis this last legislative session, they added sewer to the courses as well. And those who have been on the council over ten years, or example, those who have not been on the council ten years and have to take the courses. I think the next one is in July, the one is in September. They have four courses available that go online to rural water, along with to permission. But they're looking for.
I was just saying, you would have to take those courses. You would. Because you're not, you hadn't been here over ten years. As you, it didn't, it didn't matter. You and, I think Ms. Miller passed hers.
Ms. Miller has taken it.
Yeah, so it's you and Mr. Dr. Miller will have to take those two courses.
Lono. Yes, so we'll, we'll get you a packet on it, Eddie.
You can do it. Cam. Yes, sir, I want you to.
I think it is, I'm not sure.
It's eight hours. Eight hours. It's typically on a Friday, eight hours.
Okay. Um, so I, I believe the next two items on your agenda, item six B on the Juneteenth Motorcade and Festival, and on the six C, the Lockhart Five K Run. I believe those have been approved by you, but there was some documentation that the presenters or sponsors needed to make sure that they got turned into the clerk. Is that where we are? We're just kind of informing you that they've taken those extra steps. So we have a Juneteenth Festival and Motorcade and Lockhart Five K Run. And I guess since we're talking about it, I can tell the dates of it. On the Juneteenth event, looks like they're doing something on June the fourteenth from ten AM to seven PM. And it's downtown at the Pavilion Stage. It's the Juneteenth event. And then the Lockhart Five K Run. It got the location listed as one forty-one Cheerish Street. And certainly, if anybody needs this information, it's available online. And we'll make sure it's posted to the city's webpage so anybody will have access to it if they need more information on either of those events. Um, then beyond that, what's the third item? Um, the Delta Dogs Agreement between the city. I believe the council approved.
Yes, council approved it. I had not gotten a contract with Delta Dogs.
We got a contract in the packet. It's modeled after one we did several years ago with the Boys and Girls Club. But I guess that's for informational purposes only. Um, I guess the question now, though, is we approved this in twenty twenty-four for the year twenty twenty-four, but it was never fully executed. And so do we need to do it over for the year twenty twenty-five? Because it's only for one year, it's renewable, but.
Andre, make sure when they have that meeting I'm supposed to be at, Lono, I'm not in the hospital with surgery for my knee.
They have, we'll be to the base. They already set the meetings. They have something alone, but they have one in hospitals. We'll be to, we'll be to the base.
Right.
We do that registration and that.
Yes, uh, super staff, contract is basically left fourth year, empty day writing.
Right. And so we got the writing here, but we never did do it in twenty twenty-four. So the question is, um, and what do we do now to facilitate? Uh, they got a spare neuter clinic coming up sometime in the month of June. And they're intended to use the funding for the spare neuter clinic, which would help to manage our population.
Council just has, just approved, approved it for twenty twenty-five.
So we need a motion to approve the Delta Dogs appropriation of five thousand dollars for the purpose of doing a spare neuter clinic in June of twenty twenty-five?
Mr. Val, we, we didn't give them the money in twenty twenty-four because we didn't have a contract. So we're going to give them five for twenty twenty-four and five for twenty twenty-five?
Is that a room? The motion, the question is, are we approving the contract? One, if you could prove it, are you doing the full ten thousand, just doing five thousand for twenty twenty-five and not on an appropriation for twenty twenty-four? It was not paid in twenty twenty-four.
I mean, that, that, that's up to the, for people here who have votes on that. But in light of the fact that twenty twenty-four is gone and we can't get it back out of our financial situation. I, I would suggest five for twenty-five, but.
That was part of the issue last year was you didn't have the money.
Oh, okay. Mr. Val says last year we didn't have the money, so it'd be up to the body. Whatever the, as a motion, we entertain a motion.
On Delta Dogs.
On Delta Dogs.
Give me five thousand dollars for twenty twenty-five? Yes, sir. I saw him move.
Motion by St. Columbia to five thousand dollars for Delta Dog and the, I believe, spare neuter clinic. And second by Davis, is there any discussion? There's no discussion, madam clerk, would you call the roll, please? But, but just, it's just a second.
So, so what's up with the five thousand? Are we giving five thousand dollars?
No, they're doing spare and neuter, and they're doing the dog control. That's right, cities can contract with them.
That's what.
For, for services that we would normally do. We don't have a dog, an animal control department or dog pound, anything like that, and they're doing spade or holding animal population.
But we're not going to give them anything for twenty twenty-four.
The motion is currently different, five thousand twenty twenty-five.
And you already approved the one for twenty twenty-four. The council voted to approve that, but we didn't give it to them yet.
Well, right now on the table, we just have the one. We can come back, it's because we catch the motion. And we have a St. Columbia to take.
For twenty twenty-five, yeah.
Twenty twenty-five.
Mr. St. Columbia? Okay. Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Etherly?
Yes.
Ms. Miller? Dr. Miller, yes.
No, madam clerk, we can go back to twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
We want us to provide the president about twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four appropriated, we never paid anything.
What did they not ask for the money or?
If they asked for the money. They asked for the money, but we hadn't completed the contract, and we couldn't give them the money until we completed the contract.
But we approved it.
We approved it.
Approved last year.
So what do we need to do?
We want to prove it this year.
Well, we got it here, you're out of run.
The question is, since they approved last year and did never give it, uh, are you going to ratify twenty twenty-four's appropriation and give them the full ten thousand versus the five thousand? That's what St. Columbia's asking. No, the body, that's what they're discussing as you walk them back in.
We approved it in twenty twenty-four, is that right?
Yes, they've never given it to.
And we never gave them the money?
No, sir.
Did they not need it?
They, I could not give them a check for five thousand in twenty twenty-four until the contract had been drawn up and the mayor had signed it. And the contract was not prepared. So they didn't get anything in twenty twenty-four at all.
But we did approve it.
Yes.
You approved it.
I move if we give them the.
Y'all approved it in this body, but we never did a contract.
You approved it and you, you gave instructions as to what the wording was to be. And the city attorney was to draw it up and the mayor was to have signed it. It didn't have to come back to you. And the contract just kind of got pushed to the side and never was prepared, and I never gave them their money.
So, so now that we have a contract, then it can be signed, we can move forward?
Yeah, but they're asking about last year's money, that's what they're asking about. It, it wasn't about.
I, I don't, I don't know how we undo last year, though. If they're doing the, the spare neuter clinic for this year and it costs five thousand dollars. At this point, I understand some paperwork didn't get done. I don't know how we go back and do something in twenty twenty-four when it's passed already.
That was the last year's funding cycle, last year's go.
We approved it. I said we can give it to them.
Y'all want to table twenty twenty-four to next week, next council week, so y'all discuss.
Yeah, let's vote for it.
If the IRS owes you money, they can be if it's two or three years later. What's the difference?
Yes, I'm sorry, what was that?
Our, she might, maybe before you, before you get it, but they.
If you own it, you don't.
They operate differently.
I think, I think the reason why, why, why Ms. Redd said, that they have, they have contacted me and her both. We just have, we have a contract. They came by and said, hey, we don't have, I kept saying, we have a contract, so I guess.
They got a contract now?
We will have, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I understand. We got a, we have a, don't we have a financial situation?
Yeah, they're getting five thousand times what they got last year.
Well, I feel like this, and the point is, since, since last year's coming down, if they have something, we can help with.
Let's, let's get this spare neuter clinic out of the way, and if they need more, they can come back and ask for it. Let's do it that way. So we got dogs running rampant on North Baringo, Coanza, down Russell, and, and folk going over there feeding it up. Folks that don't live over there.
On the avenue, St. Clair?
Maybe so. Some of them folk live over there.
But my point is that if we owe them the money, we approved it, we should have given it to them.
Yeah, well, and, and, and I, I take it that, that, that's me. Hold on, that, that's me. We'll take care of.
No, wait a minute. Well, well, again, we've spent a lot of time on this. We got a long agenda. Let, let's get the five thousand paid. We ain't, we just appropriated, we got a contract, city town got to prove it. Mayor got to sign it, Ms. Crowley got to sign it, and they get the money and do the clinic. After that clinic, if they say they need more money, they come in and justify it to you. You're free to, to say, okay, give them the money, we appropriated last year.
Yeah.
But at this point, we know, we spoiling what we are doing, we're giving them the money. All right, so if we can move on to the minutes. Uh, we got minutes from May the sixth and May the thirteenth, starting on page seventeen. And I'll summarize those.
Page seventeen. Page seventeen.
Uh, on, on May the sixth, um, the action items were three. One was to approve the minutes of April fifteenth, April twenty second, night. And that was approved by a vote of six to zero. There was an appointment, uh, and reapportment to the Helen West Town Police Department Authority that included John McClintock, Bishop Lee Ricardo, Mr. Bobby Bell, Mr. Tyrone Staden, and Mr. Wes Hunter Junior, uh, replacing Stu. A motion, vote was four to zero. Uh, at that time, it was only four council members in the room. And that was a basic ordinance. That was the place it on the third and final reading, it passed six to zero. A motion to adopt the ordinance also passed zero. And a motion to adopt the emergency clause also passed six to zero. And those are the minutes from the sixth. On the thirteenth, the action items include a proposal, um, to renew some John Deere mobile leases. That motion passed six to zero. Uh, there was a motion, um, to require overtime reapproved by the city council prior to payment. That motion passed a vote of five to one. And then there's a resolution on financing some repairs. And that resolution passed six to zero. No other action was taken in either of those two meet, meetings. So we could have a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Ms. Davis moved, uh, accept the minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Etherly, second the motion, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, we can please.
Ms. Davis? Mr. St. Columbia?
Is there a copy of the minutes in the meeting, in the?
Yes, sir, you just, we gave it. It started page seventeen, Mr. St. Columbia.
Page seventeen.
Yes, sir.
I looked for them, I didn't see them.
You've had to.
Let's find out what we got here first.
Mr. Etherly?
Page seventeen.
Yes.
Page sixteen.
Page sixteen, here we go, information.
Page seventeen, she said, means, means minutes. And then you got a couple pages, and you start reading on page nineteen.
I see some minutes here on the fifteen. Sixteen.
On what page, Mr. St. Columbia?
Page fifteen. Is that what we're approving that? July the sixteen? Yeah.
It's right behind. It's right on page seventeen.
Page seventeen, all right, there's my page seventeen.
Look on all of them. Right there.
Oh, okay, page nineteen.
Page six.
Page nineteen.
Page seven, eight, six, where we have it.
There's a motion in the second on the floor. Mr. St. Columbia and Mr. Messina were weighing on your votes.
Well, I abstain.
Mr. Messina, you abstained as well?
I'm going to abstain, abstain also.
Okay, motion fails, next issue.
All right, uh, if you need to turn to page twenty four. Right. Twenty four and twenty five, we start with a overtime summary for the month of April of two thousand and twenty five, and it's by departments. And I don't know if anybody has any questions about any of that. This is, this was emailed to, uh, I believe the entire city council, maybe it's a link where you could open it up. And then, uh, we hand delivered it to Mr. St. Columbia because the, the link wouldn't work for him. But it shows overtime by department and administration department for the month. Fifty eight, roughly two hundred and fifty nine hours, or two hundred and sixty with that one hour in code enforcement. In the fire department, eight hundred and forty hours, fifteen thousand, nine hundred dollars. In landfill, two hundred and forty three hours, five thousand, nine hundred, seventy dollars and forty seven cents. And court, ten hours, two hundred and forty three dollars. And the police department, eleven hundred and sixty five hours, thirty nine, eleven hundred and sixty five point thirty nine hours, twenty four thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty four cents. And sanitation, two hundred and twenty seven hours. That's five thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety one cent. In the street, two hundred and eight hours, five thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and thirteen cents. And all of those are overtime. Uh, Mr. Etherly had asked for a list of employees, and this is not a complete list. Um, I think this only lists a few of the departments, but in the fire department, it's got twenty six employees. And got them named there, police department, twenty employees. Uh, sanitation department, it has fifteen on the list, but two with red check marks by their name, who are no longer employed. Sometime during the month of April, they were separated. And the street department is showing twelve, um, with eleven people now with one person separated in the month. There's also one that's not listed, who's been, uh, volunteered to part time status, uh, PRN status. He's not listed on here. Uh, he's a heavy machine operator, he has some health concerns. And so he'll be available as needed. Then questions, comments, anything I can answer about any of that information I just shared.
How, how does overtime get approved?
Well, the way it's supposed to work is the, the department head would approve overtime uh, under whatever guidelines the mayor has provided to the department head. And so ordinarily, the person who is over that department approves the overtime.
Mr. Mayor, are there any guidelines for approval of overtime?
Uh, department heads submit their, well, when they submit their terms, they'll tell they have some overtime and approved it. But since now, since the last meeting, there's no overtime, so there, between police and fireworks will come you all. They won't be paying until you all approve it. Before, before it was. What, what's the questions?
I, I think she was asking if the department head had proved it.
Proved, uh, this, this, this overtime that we received?
Yes, sir.
Are we going to have overtime in the future?
You went to the last meeting, we discussed the overtime, we're coming for it.
Uh, hold on one second, I, there's a process over payroll where somebody, as I understand it from this class, has to sign a document that authorizes her to put the overtime in. So it's going to be the department head, me, or the mayor.
But this, this is an astronomical amount of overtime that indicated here.
Yes, sir.
We, that's what's costing us a lot of money, is overtime.
Yes, sir, so, so it's.
We, we need.
There's, there's several things that jump out just looking at the report.
Yeah.
Uh, one of those would be clerical people getting overtime. Uh, uh, with some of the guys outside working in the field, machine may break down, they gotta stay with it until we get it pulled up or something of that sort, they may have to repair tile inside of it, all kinds of different things might cause that to be some overtime. For the clerical people, uh, what should probably happen is if they work late one day, then they come in late another day to balance it out where they don't get overtime. But that's one of the things that jumps out. Another thing that jumps out, of course, is that in certain departments, certain people get more overtime than others. It's not like the, the load is being shared for whatever reason there may be beneath the surface on that.
That was killing us is a lot of this overtime financially.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We need to, we need to stop this overtime like this.
We, 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 we must do something to arrest the bleeding, and overtime is part of it. It's part of it, it's not all of it, but overtime is part of it.
Well, what are we going to do in the future about all this overtime?
Well, it's, we, we're going to do whatever the council decides that we should do. One of the things I've suggested is, is you go to comp time. Um, but the other thing, what we, what you all voted on last meeting, that may have caused some confusion, was that all overtime had to be pre-approved by the mayor and then approved by the council before it's paid. So they had to make sure that the mayor was.
So all the overtime is going to be approved by the mayor?
Before it's, before it's done.
It'll be dropped to us?
Before it's paid.
Before it's paid.
Right. That's what the most, last one, now.
That's what I thought.
Two weeks ago. So this, this, this report could predate that. And of course, we didn't change anything yet in terms of how overtime is being paid, uh, because we're waiting on more direction from the council. As my understanding, the mayor told the department heads to cut out overtime with their employees. So we had to see.
Looking, looking at this report.
Yes, sir.
It looks bad.
Yes, sir.
Really looks bad.
I understand.
And, uh, we need to stop the overtime. Uh, well, of course, I can understand police and fire, you have to, you got a fire.
Well, 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 let, let me help you to repeat what you're saying now. Police and fire last month was forty thousand dollars overtime alone. And forty thousand dollars in one month. Times ten is four hundred thousand. Times twelve is four hundred and eighty thousand. Almost had me, nah.
What was the other?
Huh?
Okay, that's page five, but what about the rest? Sanitation and.
Sanitation was roughly five, street was roughly five. Landfill was just right here. Landfill was right at six, so eighteen between those three. The court was two hundred. And the administration was forty seven hundred.
What I'm trying to say is if we don't put a stop somewhere along the line, we don't have any money.
I understand, and I, I, I believe we can get the administration down to zero. Right? We can get that to zero. Um, you should be, you get most of them down to zero. Policing fire, I know you got to handle those delicately, but I, I, I want us to be mindful of the words that we use because those employees are hearing those words, and I think to some extent they're misusing those words. They know that you don't want to cut police, they know that you don't want to cut fire. But this is what they're doing. It's forty thousand dollars a month.
That's a lot of money for overtime.
Yeah. And, and right now, they can't draw down their life because we're not paying. At some point, we got to stop.
Yeah, we got to.
Yeah.
Can I ask you something else better?
Yes, sir.
Uh, what's the breakout on that fourth, how much is fire and how much is police?
Fire was twenty four thousand in April, according to this report that Mr. Class gave.
Fifteen fire.
Say, how much was fire and police?
Uh, well, police is twenty four thousand, eight hundred and fifteen thousand. I don't know if I said it backwards, fire was fifteen thousand or something.
Fire was sixteen. And fire has twenty six people.
Had what?
Twenty six people.
Right, what were you, you said the people or the amount of money?
I said the amount of money.
Yeah. Yes, fifteen thousand, nine hundred and sixteen thousand. Police got twenty people. They got more people than fire. According to this report. Not more people, they got twenty people, they, they don't have this small number, so they got twenty, fire twenty six on this report. Police is twenty four thousand, almost twenty five thousand dollars in overtime. So, Mr. St. Columbia, the question at this point is, what does the council suggest, recommend, that we're going to follow through with the, because we got an executive order and resolution that was drafted in light of the last meeting. And it's in the documents, but I don't know if that's what the council wants to do.
This administration is going to have to get a handle on this overtime, but it's breaking the back financially of the city. Is that right, Mr. Trey?
Yes, sir.
I, I, I think the issue is about, um, there was a motion for the council to review and approve overtime. And I emailed and said we probably need to hold up because if an employee actually works the overtime, then they have to be paid period end.
One way or the other.
I mean, that, that part is, is accurate, so we can look at it, but that we still have to pay it. The problem is not when it get in here, it's before it gets here.
That's right.
And, and the problem, as I see it, is, is when I look at this report, some of this overtime is not doable. It, it's, it's, it's false, all right? And so the problem is when I ask the question, who approves it? Somebody let it go through.
Yeah.
Somebody let it go through. And even when I look at police and fire, when I start to look at individuals, because last time we talked about numbers, department numbers, but, but when I start to look at people, I'm like, uh, well, wait a minute now, I don't believe this one and I don't believe that one. That's not my, that's not my place to say that it's, it's legitimate or not, but the department heads have to step in and they shouldn't let it go through, because if people are stealing time, it should make it here, they should be fired.
That's right.
They should be fired. And so.
What happened before us?
Right, so the, the issue that I say is, we can review it. But the approval, if it has already happened, the department head has to cut that off before it happens. Because once they say we worth it, we can't say, no, you don't, you don't get paid for it, so.
You don't have to.
So, 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 so the question is, what's the process? I mean, I want to see it, just like we see it now, I want, I want to see it and see what it is. Because I can't stop it, but I can talk about it. And, and maybe some people won't do it if they think, then, you know, these are all public records. And so I can lean over into this microphone and say, John, they got a hundred and fifty hours overtime in one day, if I want to. And I haven't done that because I want people to just stop, right? I want the, the, the department heads, the people who are in management positions to just stop it. But I want to see the numbers because at some point, I start saying, you know, that guy over there who claims to be at work, you know, who's. I start saying, you know, that guy over there who claims to be at work, you know, who's, he's at home during the day, you know, I, I talked to the mayor about, you know, following people around. We had a decent conversation about that, but I, I say, you know, some of these people, people see him not working. They see him. People pull me aside and say, are you talking about this person? Because you know they go home all the time. And I'm like, no, I'm not trying to do that. I'm not trying to call. But it's gotta stop at some point. And so my, I think it has to, when it comes here, I wanna see it, but I don't know that we can say they get it or they don't get it because we're not in a position to say they worked it or they didn't work it. But the department heads and the supervisors and everybody who has a hand in approving it has to do that part.
I agree with that.
Is it pre-approved? I mean, do you get preapproval from the supervisor or do you just stay on and work over? How does it work?
No.
I mean.
Who determines that? You're right.
Well, I, I, unfortunately, I, I know Mr. Collins told me, we wanted to trust him that he had one guy who was waiting to get ready to get in the truck. And he was just sitting there waiting to get in.
But I mean, that's, that's crazy. If you don't have a truck to get in, you shouldn't be on the, on the clock.
I'm not saying, I don't know if he was on the clock or off the clock. He was waiting.
I understand, but we can't pay people to wait to work.
Well, I'm gonna say, I'm, I'm not saying, I don't know if he's on the clock or not.
I, I understand, I'm saying, I'm just saying, if he is, if he is. I never had a job where they say, come and just wait to work and, and get on the clock.
And I, I mean, I'm just saying, the guy was there waiting for, we gotta get out of the truck. And it, it's something we gotta. We got the equipment and we were trying to do it, get our equipment where people don't have to wait.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and I think sometimes we have, we gotta get out of the truck. We have people behind, when we're behind, a person has to work alone. Because you go behind in these drives, you see those, you're not expecting, so it's, it's, it's a lot too big, you wanna explain your fault. But I understand what you said, it's hard, it's just to, just to stop.
So Chief, I know you've shown hands, but if you want, you want him?
Look, I gotta talk about somebody else, I thought we'd be able to.
I think the issue, the issue is. I think the issue starts with department heads. The issue is the department head has to know who's working and what they're doing. And to make a fair assessment as to whether they're entitled to overtime. And the department head needs to keep the mayor fore on desk to it. And part of it is, whatever inefficiencies there are, need to be corrected. This body really, to answer Mr. Ethel's question, I wouldn't have to be in y'all discussing, but the, the issue is the only thing the city council can do is sit here and, um, deal with appropriations and, and deal with, on that end, because once they done the work, if you're not gonna pay the overtime, then you may run into a solicitor claim, federal law of standards that claim. And I'm not saying, the thing, the thing that needs to happen is this, the administration just needs to look at, uh, what it is, how to, how to curb the overtime and what's the most efficient way to, the way to do it. Because there, there are some things that, that the product can be controlled and, uh, the, the mayor should be all knowing as to, okay, what's the issue in this department? Why isn't it doing it? And the department head should do. Overtime is, is at crisis level and we need to do something about it. And that's just the bottom line.
Well, I tell you, we, we have got overtime fixed, we don't have that problem. Only if I know, everybody knows what we're trying to do, so we can move past that. We, we, we got this under control. If you come in with some overtime, you know what it's gonna be. And that's it. It's only two departments right there. If you come in with some, I'm gonna deal with the department. So if everybody knows the rules and what's gonna happen, we, we, we on this crunch thing, cut thing, so you gotta worry about sending a list like this no more. If they come in with it, the department head will be looking for another job. So on to the next. And, and I, I, everybody got reasons, the solution, solution, but come on. I mean, we, it's, you know, we know what's gonna happen.
Overtime just got stopped.
We ain't worried, it's, it's always, police and fire, we, we got some things me and, me and the chief of staff are working on and they're developing it, it's gonna be developed mighty fast, just a moment. Chief Staff, you ready to keep rolling?
I believe the next item on the agenda is water department. And you got two, two items, I don't know, the, the first item on page forty nine is, uh, something from boat pro series, some equipment. And then the item on page fifty two, uh, Lucky Pump and Whale Service. Uh, we had lightning strike, one of our high service pumps on the Clearwell on First Street in West Town. And we need to replace the soft start. And this port is for material and labels, eight thousand, four hundred, six dollars and eighty four cent, including ten and a half percent sales tax, uh, on that. And, uh, this will keep our operator from having to go and manually reset the breaker, because the breaker keeps tripping because there's not a, this, this thing was struck by lightning. So that's, that's unlucky. Uh, we just got that today from, uh, Mr. Rose. And so we include it in the packet. The bulk thing has been in the packet a few times and the mayor hadn't said anything about it, so I don't know if he wants to go forward with that or not.
That's the, the water part we're looking at, but we got more pressing issues that this, uh, Lucky Pump and Whale Service, we need to move on there. Uh, if they, if they, if they need the equipment, we can wait some other time, but I know what, what is most important to us is looking at what, what they need.
Well, this, this soft start is, is very necessary. It's critical to the operation of the flow of water. Uh, if this is put in place, it helps our automated system to keep the tank full. If much malfunction happens, the tank could go empty.
Is there a motion to, uh, on Luck, Lucky Whale, Luck, Luck, Lucky Pump and Whale Service, is there a motion to, to get this paid? For eight thousand, four hundred and six dollars, eighty four cents? Is there a motion to pay it?
And that's the, that's the boat that hit by lightning?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and it's been fixed?
We need to get, get it fixed.
No, it hasn't been fixed. This is too fixed.
Right, we need to get this fixed.
We need to get it fixed.
Well, come on.
Eight thousand four, I know that we have paid this bill.
It's the same kind of move, we pay, uh, Lucky Pump and Whale Service for eight thousand, four hundred and six dollars, eighty four cents in their second. Ms. Davis, second, the motion, is there any discussion? Ms. Mary, Mr. Messina said, does the insurance company cover anything?
That's what I was getting my next question.
She said we had, we hadn't filed it, but she.
We'll file, we'll file it, let's see.
Okay, you're gonna file that, but we, we need to go ahead and get it fixed.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ethely?
If the insurance don't pay for, or if the insurance don't pay for it, we pay for it.
Right. So the motion is for us to pay in the event the insurance doesn't. Right.
That's my motion.
That's right.
Mr. Ethely?
Yes. Did that have anything to do with the storm? I'm sorry. Did it have anything to do with the storm? Was it?
I'm guessing it has something to do with the storm. Now, this is a couple of weeks ago when it struck. Uh, the estimate is from the thirteenth, so it happened before the thirteenth.
Okay.
But I don't know the exact date. But I, I double checked it.
I was just, I was just asking, because I know sometimes.
Gentlemen, excuse us.
Y'all in the middle of a vote?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
There's been a motion and a second and then two votes cast. Yes, sir.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yeah.
Mr. Messina?
Yes. I thought we had a discussion.
Dr. Miller?
I'm on St. Columbia.
Ms. Davis said yes. Ms. Miller's absent. Mr. Ethely said yes. I have four yeses. One extension and one answer.
Dr. Miller, would you continue your question? I was just trying to.
No, no, that's, that's, I just, the only reason I was asking, because if it was, you know, if it's anything like where if a governor declares a, a natural, that passion or whatever, then you can also give me a verse for that too, that's all.
Turn to the next couple of pages. On page fifty five, we have an ordinance establishing sanitation routes for three days based on the ward line. In the past, the council has not adopted, uh, sanitation routes. But certainly, you know, doing this is a way of getting your input and giving the public the opportunity to see it when we publish it in the paper and all of that. But the ordinance also does a few other things to clean up some of the stuff that's going on with our waste collection. Um, starting in article two, well, article one, says the route shall begin Tuesday, July the first, twenty twenty five. And be reduced to three days as outlined in the route schedule attached to this ordinance. Solid waste collection route shall occur Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, each week. Um, section two, in, 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 in order to provide the most efficient service to our customers, we laid out the following guidelines. The carts must be placed on the curb in front of your house, no later than six AM on your scheduled collection day. And turn so that the handles and wheels are facing your house. Garbage must be properly contained in tied bags inside your city issued garbage can with the lid closed. If not all of your garbage fit, will fit inside your cart, you will need to request an additional cart by calling the sanitation department. We must be able to access your cart with our large trucks. Vehicles must not be parked on the curb, nor other obstruction, mailboxes or additional garbage carts, boxes, bag trash, et cetera. Maybe be within four feet of the cart. Cart must be placed so that we can reach it with the arm of our trucks. Cart should be placed no more than three feet behind the curb in order. Uh, in some cases, we may paint a white line indicating where to put the cart. The cart must not contain unacceptable materials such as car batteries, wet paint, oil, tires, yardage, like leaves, sticks, and all those things that shouldn't go in those garbage cans. Uh, the containers should be removed from the street or the curb within twenty four hours of completion of your solid waste collection. It's unlawful for any person who is not a city resident to place solid waste in any, uh, city container. It shall be unlawful for any person to deface, destroy, burn, otherwise tamper with any disposable cars or their contents or the equipment provided and owned by the city. An illiterant resulting from the tipping of the container not completely closed or resulting from solid waste being placed outside of residents' containers or excessive liquid con- content within the container is the responsibility of the person assigned to the container. The responsible party, this dwelling unit, is responsible for maintaining the sanitary condition of the solid waste containers and the area of placement of the containers. Persons shall be allowed to deposit their solid waste in their city approved containers in any type of enclosed bag, small box, or tight container to reduce the amount of loose refuge in the containers and reduce the possibility of odors and vector problems. Large objects must not prevent the lid of the container from closing completely. Residents are required to wash the containers with a cleaner. Cans and carts will not be replaced if dirty. Any debris left in the vacated apartment house or vacant lot is of the sole responsibility of the tenant or owner of the property. And it also outlines for yard waste that limbs, clippings, leaves must be placed in a separate pile from other debris. Limbs can be no longer than six feet, no larger than, in diameter than six inches. Uh, please do not wind rolled leaves. Leaves should be bagged. Piles must not be placed near fences, cars, mailbox, or signs. Be aware utilities, a pile placed on top of a meter box or hair riser or beneath the overhead service line can result in damages and or personal injury if we observe the pile has been placed in a location where we cannot safely remove it. Next set of restrictions have been made. Lawn services and hire services are required to haul off their collected waste from these residences. The other part of the ordinance is a standard language. Uh, but that addresses some of the problems that we are having in our, uh, community where people are putting all kinds of stuff in these cans. Matter of fact, one of the worst experiences I had was a man that called who was dumping cat litter, feces, and all of that just directly into the can and complained that the people didn't pick it up and the can was extremely heavy and nasty and all of that. And I told him that all this stuff had to be in, in a bag. Uh, because he expected them to reach in and dig it out if the truck wouldn't pick it up and lift it. That was the one time when the arm wasn't picking it up. And I said, you know, we don't do this and these guys are human. He said, but they are God's men. I said, they work for the sanitation department, but, uh, we got some root and some, so, so this will help us to kind of deal with some of our customers who, uh, less considerate than other customers are. But the three day route, I think I've explained why, uh, that would be good, uh, at least five or six holidays during the year occur on Monday, so we certainly don't need a route on Monday, we can avoid it. And then, uh, by having Friday free, the, the guys can do a better job of maintenance of this equipment. And they can assist with other items like grass cutting or whatever else needs to be done, other dues that are assigned. And of course, if they don't wanna do other dues as assigned, if they completed their workday in the three days and, you know, they save them money because they go home. So that's, that's our proposal. I don't know if you wanna take that up now, take it up later. We also have behind it the, the itemization of the routes. We got, it says street name order. Um, which would be alphabetical order, I would, I would think, by all streets in the city. So you find your street name and go over to the route number, see which route you propose to be on. The number that's right beside the street name is the route that you own right now. And then there's one that's got a route number order showing all the route one, all the route two, all the route three. Uh, and what generally happened is some of, um, Tuesday extended over into Wednesday and then, uh, Wednesday goes over into parts of Thursday and then Thursday picks up all the Friday. Part of Thursday and all of Friday. That's what this route does. So is there any wish to do anything on that tonight?
Question?
Yes, sir.
You did a good job putting this together.
Thanks, sir.
This, this, this would not create any overtime.
No. That, that, that should have to reduce overtime. It should be. My estimate is that they do the route in about four hours a day, ru- roughly. Uh, so that's what sixteen hours.
If they follow this proposal here, it should have no overtime.
Correct. It should. And the other thing we gotta do is better job of us managing, during downtime, we need to let people go home.
Yeah.
Instead of waiting for the equipment to be fixed or whatever. Unless the equipment is in jeopardy, they may need to stay with the equipment, but if the equipment is on the sanitation shopyard being worked on, we probably need to let those employees go home. But. Let me say, I, 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 this, but, but, right now, we, 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 we doing that right now. We're in the mode, everybody sitting around. So, so we, we, we doing a necessary thing that they asking us to do to show some, that, that we're taking a lead on people sitting around and sit. If you got time to lean, you got time to clean, then go home, one of the two. So, 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 so we're, we're, we're making some moves. Uh, make sure people, if, if you're not working, you got to go. And some people voluntarily cut their hours coming in at ten, uh, to three, to four. So, I mean, w- we see the need, and all we can do is try to fix some of it as we, as we can see. We have some posters that, that separate themselves from us. So, so, you know, we, we doing a necessary thing. And then to show in, in, in the, in the next month, what we doing. I think, you know, instead of saying what we, what we gotta do, we, we, we doing it. I mean, you know, I, I, how many times we gonna say, we gotta cut this, we, we, when it came to me and I saw it, we jumped on it. I mean, so there's more, there's more things that the body wants to do, we're doing. But right now, we, you know, we, we, we got a, we got a plan going together. And it's trying to get with the plan, it's just saying.
Yeah, you, he asked about overtime, but that one was, was, that's not what's on the floor.
Yeah.
When you're talking about overtime, what's on the floor is how they're gonna adopt the ordinance.
Yeah, I, I know, I know, I know it's on the floor, but I'm just saying.
I, that's what I'm saying, that we gonna do that, uh, if we're not, we can go on to the next item.
Remind me, um, so on the Monday and Friday, that's when they're gonna do maintenance of the equipment and?
Under, under the old schedule, they're supposed to do maintenance on Monday. Uh, and. Uh, and that that hasn't worked as well as it should. Um, but that's what they're supposed to do, you know, Monday. We we let them, we let them even have a route on Monday and they shouldn't have a route on Monday. They call it the handicap route, but the uh the handicap route should be along the same day as everything else. That's the whole purpose of having a route. So management has to take control of the employees as opposed to the employees running the show, how would they decide.
And the and the and I know you shared this too, but I can't remember. The commercial, um, that would that be going on on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday as well?
No, 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 com- commercial is gonna be as paid for by the customer.
Okay.
Uh, typically, most of our commercials, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Uh, Monday is the heaviest day of all of that. Uh, many customers get a Friday pickup before the weekend, so all their waste from the week is in there. And then they they get a rush over the weekend, so they get picked up on Monday. And that's gonna be the next item I talked to you about, host commercial is bleeding. We 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 are not charging enough money at all.
Mr. Val.
Yes, sir.
If we ever get the smaller truck to to go on those little tight routes.
Did we ever get it?
Yeah.
No, we we during that time, we were having water issues, so water was the main thrust. And so when we bought these new trucks, those trucks were not a consideration.
So so how do you, so how do we?
A part of what they're doing is when they use Wash Sellers, the contractor, he takes his truck on the route because it's a smaller truck. But I believe we can also take our own real load truck on that route. Uh, because the ideal is you can't get on the tight street, they can roll the car to the truck and then roll the car back to. You know, truck can get somewhere close enough, is what I'm saying. Uh, that's just one of the things you have to do. Again, that's gonna be uh management ironing all of that out. So are there any wish to adopt this ordinance or do we go on to something else? We still using Wash Sellers some.
And why are our our.
That that's something that again can be minimized. To to Wash replaced the truck, we lost the whole truck that we didn't replace. The truck number twenty nine, the little truck with the side arm, it looked like a pickup truck with a garbage thing on the back. It just went totally out of service. It would it would jump. So Wash was helping us before that because the other trucks kept breaking. And then we got those trucks, the big, the two big ones running. Twenty nine went completely out, so Wash rode kind of got bigger. Uh, because Wash was just doing like, I don't know, four to ten hours a week maybe at first. And I love more than that. I don't know the exact number, I can find out for you. But this building shows it too. But I don't see, I just know that he's turning it in.
So that's that's something we ought to work on, uh, to get him out of the way as well. So you so you have somebody because that's taking somebody to uh we we see. What the bank says about these trucks that we got, because I think one of these trucks is smaller to go on on the street. Because so far, we've we've been paying him like two thousand.
Yeah, it it may not go through the street totally, but it'd be close enough. Like I said, you have people walking where they can bring it to the truck. This truck is a little smaller now. Yeah.
No, I'm just saying that the purpose of us getting the trucks more to.
Get rid of that.
Get rid of that, I mean, get rid of that, it should be uh.
Right.
It can take the place of. Just get there.
Now, now, right now, we then we have to do business. That is the truck we got, maybe it's big. We 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 walk on it, dump it there. Can can it, it took it, is it big to walk a little small here, then dump it to transmission?
Are you asking me a question?
Yeah, I'm asking.
Well, is the truck too big?
Yeah.
No, what 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 I what I'm saying is whatever the tight street is, I don't know which one they're considering tight. The truck can can at least get to the cross street and it can't back up in there. And it can bring the truck to the truck.
Because I think it's like Caroline, it's the like, at this point, let's stop, let's stop there. And let's see if we can get those guys to start going on, she's pulling those cans out.
Yes, yes, sir.
This is gonna save us some, we we and let's let's cut that. So Mr. Val, that's what we'll cut that.
Okay. Um, seeing that there's no 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 energy on the the ordinance, let us go to something that's gonna wake you up.
Well, I mean, do y'all, I mean, is there anything you can say that would be a downside? I can't really say.
It's it's hard for me to say. I talked to the department head a few last week. Some some, and I I'm fair about it, I don't, I don't work in sanitation, I don't know how they devise these. I don't know. How they do what they do. But I have questions about like routes. Why do you do it, do it this way, like what Miss Davis was asking about? See, because going back, it's because many of these things, there's some issues. None of it, if the management doesn't change. And so. I mean. I'd be more ready to take action after I see next month's payroll, this month's payroll, it's more. See what changes we eat and how we pay in time and money. There's nothing we can do that impacts it if you keep doing the same thing, so. I'm I'm trying to hold questions that, you know, for for a different time when I can ask them and kind of get a have a decent discussion about it, which not necessarily tables.
No, obviously, even even though that our physical uh for physical improvement. It was kind of looking for organization. I don't understand. Whether it saves money or not, I don't know. But I but I don't have a time to anybody from sanitation, but I don't know.
You try to, you can you see where the, and they can't keep, let them know. I mean, if if this is what we're going, hold them accountable, hold them accountable to me. Hey, then you can't keep talking about somebody new. And then if if management is the problem, you tell them, this is where we gotta go, this be efficient. You see, time time is being wasted, office being wasted. Hey, that's somebody that that bothers you or if you don't if you don't do it right, that's enough.
Great, that's possible, but kind of the problem we got here about not doing the thing we're efficient, organized. I can tell you the organized way to do it, but if you don't do it that way, then it 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 doesn't happen and and the the, I don't understand why what we do right now doesn't work. See, there's a reason why the operating right now doesn't work. It's gonna not be solved, changing the, if you're new playing. Sometimes people just have just have to um execute what you had, we just. I'm saying. People clock and wait for a truck, I'm not, I understand, I don't know if they're on clock, I understand if they are. If we got a lot of people that's around and wait on the truck, there's nothing that we can detect where it's going. That's broken, that's a way to operate. And it's nothing that minds.
So maybe, uh, Mr. Val, we'll bring it back next, next time, bring that back.
I say, I don't know. And and I'm.
So we divide, it's all what to do. What has since that time, drivers, the managers, they picking up. People's names, uh, let's say it's Simone got a route, or Terry, or Tucker, whoever, what by name, they got routes. And that ain't the way you manage. You don't, you don't go into McDonald's and make a a cow burger, you make a Big Mac. And go into the king and you're done, and you're walking. So at some point. The manager, they got the tail, the employees, this is how operate. If you don't look how we, that's fine. Won't be able to. And if the manager can't make that happen, then the manager can't work here. But at some point, it it I think we need to. Try to just have. But don't.
It actually, Mr. Val, for our, this is the thing. For the loans, these folks, they want to, hey, I mean, so they try, they're like trying to hold the account because we we see what we're doing. Some folks like, well, I don't, that ain't my job.
If it ain't your job, I see you later. Uh, uh, what, it's 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 time to stop all that, see these folks out of here, because guess what? I police want to fire if I need them. I will street, I will clean the streets. And all our folks doing, well, they don't pay me enough, but not. Because somebody want a job, I want one. So my thing is y'all got something so it can put some kind of dealing on their heart. Then we, you're trying to play with them, because they respect you all, the city council, say this, oh, we gotta do it. Let me call my city council, they say we gotta do it, well, there's a time, let's let's move, because hey, I'm sending them home, the daycare closed, my kids, they can't go, so it's closed. They babysitting nobody. If they ain't doing the work over here, buy them. Find somebody to do your job or or the duty's gonna be passed on to somebody else. It it I hope they all adopted to get him some 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 kind of ground dollar quick because they'll see that the city council, the mayor, play, should nobody be standing. I just got on about the yard, I could get the yard, yell at somebody, go, oh, you got, you got to be, you got to be, come on. Whatever y'all want to do with it.
Mr. Mayor, you recommending.
Yes, sir.
That we pass this ordinance.
Yes, fast.
And you feel like that this will help us with our overtime?
Yes, sir.
And as I understand it, uh, the Mewest Valley, it does take about four hours a day, each day, three days a week, that's twelve hours.
I'm saying that's gonna probably take six.
Execute.
The three, the three day is gonna probably take six. I think the four day they're doing about four hours a day. You know, there's multiple trucks now, so now, yeah, each truck doing about four hours a day or so roughly. Depending on how busy the landfill is and other stuff.
What you're saying, we need to do now.
Yes, sir.
Cut out a lot of this overtime and to manage our people better. You feel like that this ordinance will do the trick?
I think that will certainly help, yes, sir.
It'll help.
Yes, sir.
Is that right, Mr. Mayor?
I I put it together, yes, we put it.
What's your ordinance number? Then I'll make a motion if we approve ordinance number three, uh, twenty twenty five, reading title only.
Mr. Saint Columbia, spin the rules of reading, ruling the title only?
Right. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Saint Columbia makes the motion to approve ordinance number three, reading title only, Mr. The Senator second the motion, there is discussion. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Saint Columbia?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Mr. Etherly?
Absent.
A four yes, one abstain, one abstent.
I've been sitting here listening to all.
Oh, just saying.
What's going on? And I think the whole problem is your managers. Your managers are the ones that's causing these problems. So you gotta get those guys straight or find somebody to take the place.
Well, Ms. Messina, if you will, I I I mean, our managers need some help. We got some good managers, they just need some help.
Well, just then help them.
I'm sorry, y'all in the middle of a vote, we have. An order to establish a three day route for collection of residential waste for citizens, Helen West, Helen customers of Helen and West Helen of water, water and sewer utilities. We need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Mr. Messina, so moved to adopt the ordinance?
Yeah.
You second, Mr. Messina?
Yeah, I second.
Okay.
Mr. Etherly?
Absent.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Mr. Saint Columbia?
Yes.
Four yes, one abstain, one abstent.
So.
Is that mercy clause?
Murdering clause.
Yes, that's mercy clause.
This 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 is the second rule to adopt the mercy clause, you second.
Second.
The Senator second the most, most guys, there is discussion.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Etherly?
Absent.
Mr. Saint Columbia?
Yeah.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Four yes.
Look, I think this, when do, when do you want to execute this? When do you want this to start?
You said July first.
You said July first.
I just, I just want to make sure that that we stop, that's the time to paper. Yeah, let let folks stop, we 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 do a better job of letting people know that something, a change has happened, so they can't say they know. Yes, sir. We're gonna, we're gonna blanket the community with information. All right, uh, thank you for that. Um, the next portion piece of this on page seventy two, you'll see what's called new commercial sanitation fees. And that new is twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, I'm not sure what year that was. Most of Etherly may recall whenever y'all raised. Um, and in 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 my, in my pedagogical spirit, I must point out that on the two yard, if we just look at the two yard, we we're currently charging forty six dollars and twenty four cent. And that's what we raised the rate to in twenty eighteen or nineteen. If you turn to the current commercial sanitation rates, that's the name of the document. That's not current as in right now. It has a fax stamp on it showing it was faxed to somebody on January the twenty first of twenty seventeen. Our two yard rate was thirty six dollars and twenty four cent. So, and if you look at both of them, go all the way through two, four, six, eight yards, you'll see we just raised ten, we added ten dollars to each dump, basically. Ten dollars per month. First, but but that's bad business. Uh, then there's one more page on seventy four showing the rates. The commercial rates didn't change. Uh, that's back in two thousand and eleven, I think it is.
Yeah.
It was thirty six dollars then. Uh, so those are your 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 rates, right? Uh, on the next page, I think you all got a full sheet where you can see it. Um, I may have to look at it a different way. But there's a chart that I put together, it's got blue line showing your ninety six gallon cart, two yard dumpster, four yard dumpster, six yard dumpster, eight yard dumpster. The red line is the one I want you to look at. And I have some information in here that helps you to understand how I came up with the calculations. But if the average weight of this M S W, that's municipal solid waste, is only two hundred and twenty five pounds in the container. Uh, on the residential, uh, you're collecting about fourteen dollars and twenty two cent per month over what you are supposed to pay to the landfill. But if that weight is a little heavier, at five hundred pounds, you're collecting one dollar and three cent. But moving down, that's residential, moving down to the two yard dumpster where it gets really uh bad for you. If it's only two hundred and twenty five pounds, uh, you're collecting seven dollars and twenty three cent a month over landfill charges.
Over landfill charges. And what, what I, what I'm trying to show you is that seven dollars and twenty-three cent is what you're charging for picking. The, the garbage up, dumping it into your truck and taking it to the landfill. So you're paying workers' comp, health benefits, salary, diesel, hydraulic and a host of other things. Out of that seven dollars and twenty-three cent, if it's only two hundred and twenty-five pounds. If it's five hundred pounds on the average, you're losing forty dollars and forty-four cent a month. You go to the four yard, it doesn't matter how much is in. You're losing money. And this is based on what it costs you to dispose of it in your landfill. You're losing five dollars and seventy-seven cent a month on the four yard at two hundred and twenty-five pounds. If it was five hundred pounds, you're losing a hundred, one dollars and twelve cent. The eight yard, six yard and eight yard doesn't get any better. We, we, we're losing money on those collections and I can show you how I, I did the math on that so you understand it. But in order for you to. Sustain the commercial part of trash collection, it's got to operate where you collect more money than you expend it out. And right now you, you're just not doing that. So the essence of this becomes the sanitation department not collecting enough money to pay the landfill. So landfill is struggling for revenue because the sanitation department is not charging enough. I'm not asking you to do anything with this today, but I did, we did talk about we were gonna bring this up at this particular meeting. So that you would have that, that information. Uh, the, the next page, I think it's seventy-six, I can't see the number on my, my screen. Um, it shows you volume to weight conversion factor, so that's how you convert cubic yards into weight. So that you can get tonnage and charge for that. Uh, or do the calculation of what you're charging. And on page, um, seventy-seven, if that's near the top, it's got MSW, which is municipal solid waste. And it's showing you an average of two hundred and twenty-five pounds on municipal solid waste. Um, there's another thing that says that the average rate is five hundred. So whatever the number is, we can choose a number, but as we're doing it now, we're losing money using either one of those figures. And I got this chart and I got one, that's from the National Recycling Coalition. I got a different chart from Recyclemania, uh, volume to weight conversion chart. All right, then it will move over to page eighty. Uh, Timmy at our landfill reached out to a couple of people to get what they're charging for commercial waste. If you recall, and I'm just gonna compare one, so we're not, yeah, I'm not going through all of them. Um, the two yard on this is GFL garbage. And the two yard every other week, uh, is a hundred and twenty-five dollars a pickup. Remember, we charging forty-six dollars and twenty-four cent. If they pick, collected every week, which is what we do, it's a hundred and forty-five dollars.
Where is this?
It's GFL, uh, they service this community some, but they, I think they may be out of hazen or something. I know they take a lot of their waste to the hazen landfill. All right, flipping over to mid-south waste. On page eighty-one, two-yard dumpster, a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty dollars a month, dump once a week. Again, we charged only forty-six dollars and twenty-four cent. Um. And I'll just go through these quickly. Uh, in purple on page eighty-two, that's residential, it's showing a Little Rock, I think this is Little Rock, that may be Conway. Is, uh, seventeen dollars a month. Um. Then on page eighty-three. That's Little Rock, ninety-six gallon cart is twenty-six, eighty-nine per month, but the commercial. If you look at that two-yard dumpster, they had fifty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cent. Uh, per month plus a sixteen dollars and fifty-one cent dumpster lease fee. So that's, you just basically made that almost seventy-five, seventy-six dollars. We had forty-six dollars and twenty-four cent. Uh, it also shows here on the municipal solid waste fees. That's city of Little Rock, twenty-nine dollars a month. Twenty-nine sixty-eight. Um. I got another city, uh, Jackson, Mississippi for residential waste is thirty-seven dollars a month. That's on page eighty-five. Then on page eighty-six, this is Hot Springs, Arkansas. The base rate for residential is nineteen dollars a month. It, it went up in a different ordinance by a dollar or two per month. But what I want to show you is the commercial down there. Um, for the two yard, it's in the middle of that page, again, I'm on page eighty-six. Two yard is seventy-nine dollars and fifty-five cent. Uh, still well above what we are charging in our landfill. It's got the other rates there in that chart, but that's Hot Springs. Um, the next page has, on page eighty-nine, eighty-seven, it has Springdale. Uh, of nineteen dollars and fifty-five cent for residential. So I tried to get you some prices of residential and commercial from around the state of Arkansas with the exception of the one I got from Jackson, Mississippi. Because they were easy to find online and others, some of them have waste being picked up by commercial haulers and it's not published on their websites. Uh. But right now, one of the main things you have to consider is that you're losing money on your commercial collections. And both sanitation and the landfill could, could use that money. Any questions about any of that? So next thing we got is the police department. Um. There was a request by the council that we have a funding device put together and we typically leave that to the treasurer. And I don't know if he was expecting to do that tonight or not, but. Uh?
I don't know what's up.
Well, they passed the base, base pay ordinance at the last meeting and they said at this meeting, they would do the appropriation article to appropriate the money for base pay.
I wasn't at the last meeting, I, I wasn't aware of that. Anything was needed for me.
Then there's a, the other thing in the police department, page ninety-one. Uh, a memo where there's a request by Dr. Miller to, to make consideration. Uh. On these three officers.
He murdered. Yeah.
That's something we do now, come back.
I'd like to move, go into executive session. Do what now?
Before, before we deal with executive session, let's, uh, back up for just a second. Uh, as relates to, uh, we need a public hearing on a. Before your next council meeting in, in June, on June the third. The planning commission referred up a rezoning issue. It's a rezoning in an area of, um. You have, uh, West Park Street, South Sam. West Russell. And, uh. West Beringo. It comes all the way over there, those, those two entire blocks. And there's a petition that was pending before the planning commission to put a triplex on West Park Street. Uh. Between, uh, Carranza and Beringo. And the council, uh, not, the, the planning commission referred that up, you all, and that's also, uh, to do some center right at. Uh, South Sam and Russell, right across from where West Side used to be. Uh, but both of those, uh, that's a first act for rezoning of that area. And then later they'll come back for special use for the thing that's on South Sam and, uh. West Russell. But they asked for rezoning from R one to R three, they want a special, a hearing set before this body, before the next meeting, like at five thirty. On the rezoning from R one to R three. R three allows for, R one will allow a duplex, but will not allow a triplex. Uh, and, uh, but R three will. And the question was asked, well, would that, would that authorize trailers? No. Uh. Many affected homes only allowed in the city in R three X, not R three. And so they asked for you all to set a special, uh, hearing on that, see how that's coming out of.
Well, it's a little difficult, man.
Nah, it's coming, it's in our papers. Well, let me, let me, let me propose this before you do your executive session. You got just a few items left, I don't know how long your executive session may be. We need a public hearing set before we go forward.
Oh, okay, we're good. I thought you said it.
Do you all disagree by affirmation to set it for, for the? June the third? What do y'all want to vote on?
What do we come up with, man? To, um.
Rezoning.
Rezoning, so that they. Build a. Duplex?
Triplex.
Build a triplex over on Beringo and Carranza.
They want to build one, right?
Yeah, it's not zoning.
Right, but we need a zoning hearing beforehand, before you have a city council meeting. Which, that's what, a, a public hearing before the meeting so they can go ahead and publish. Yes, sir.
I just thought about something else I want to go to rabbit.
June the third. Five thirty.
We also need to, at some time, visit them.
You said third.
Of course, and all that stuff.
Yes. Is that agreeable, you all want to vote, sub by affirmation, what, what is it?
Yeah, whatever.
I'm looking at the nods, Madam Clerk, would you reflect the minutes that they agreed by affirmation to hearing on? June thirty, five thirty on the rezoning of, uh. That, those, those two blocks from R one to R three. Also. At the next meeting, I asked that you all take up the notion of tiny houses. Uh, we're getting information from the state, uh, for you all to do so. Uh, at that meeting, we may have to do a moratorium until we get further guidance from you all as to what to do. We'll have an ordinance for moratorium until further guidance. But tiny houses are. Becoming an, an issue with everybody trying to, to, to get them done. I hear back to Chief Staff. All right, um, on the fire department, we got an ordinance on open burning. And we, we can actually come back to it and since you want to do an executive session, I just wanted to point out that it's there. Uh, it's drafted and modeled after the city of Benton, Arkansas. And there's a application for the permit. And that probably helped code enforcement and the fire department if we adopted those. Right. But I also wanted to point out this NFPA research. Uh, I think that's the National Fire Protection, uh, Association. And, uh. One of the things that I would point you to on page one hundred. About midway the page, and of course, you can read this and there's, it's an eight-page document, we just giving you two pages. We can certainly email you the entire document if you want it. But. On page one hundred says for mostly Korea. Or all Korea. Fire departments, the rates of career firefighters per one thousand protected have remained in the range of one point five four to one point eight one firefighters. And that's something that I think you should consider as you trying to consider what we're doing as we try to go forward. Um. There's also a separate piece in here from the US Fire, uh, US Fire Department profile in twenty twenty, I think the one I just sent you, gave you is twenty twenty-two. And the one in twenty, no, the next one is twenty twenty-two, but it uses the same data. Um. And on page one oh two, it, it repeats that same information. It's actually quoting the same information, that is one point five four to one point eight one, uh, firefighters. Uh, the most on the end of department used on average is in FS Tennessee, two point seven three officers per thousand. Uh, but this gives you kind of an average of all departments, small and large, across the country. Uh, and that would put. Our census said we had nine thousand five hundred people. And you just do the math on that. Uh, we got twenty-six people on payroll according to the report I gave you today. So then the next thing is the, the landfill, we got a KBH corporation invoice on page one oh six, we can just go there. Uh, the note says add this to the agenda, it's equipment to build apparatus for hauling leachate at the landfill. To the disposal area, this will eliminate the need for contracts to haul for us. KBH is a business in Clarkdale, cost of materials, nine thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars. Uh, Mr. Redden Wilson will be at the meeting to, to present. If you have any question, you can also call him on his cell phone, but he's, he's here and the invoice is, uh, attached and. If you have any questions about that one, um, certainly Mr. Wilson can address those. And all the other items left in this packet is the treasure report, it's in the packet and the treasure, put it on your desk tonight. Uh, but we'll give you a chance to, uh, go through that before you, I, I would think, trying to address whatever is, is in the report. As relates to the nine thousand dollars that, that Mr. Wilson is looking at for landfill. This has been an ongoing issue since two thousand, uh, six, when we, two thousand eight, when we reopened the landfill. And it's one of the.
We reopened landfill in two thousand six.
Two thousand six, we reopened landfill, I'm sorry, two thousand six. Not trying to disrespect your mayorship, but two thousand six, we opened the landfill. And, uh, it's been the issue that, that ADQ has looked at as in the consent administrative order, we've hauled leachate for years. And it's a solution that's part of this consent administrative order that we need to get done so we can stop hauling leachate. Get it to the sanitary sewer and. It, it just flow from the landfill to where it needs to go. Did I sum it up, Chief, I mean?
Very well, sir.
Director.
So I, I'm gonna get a question for the chief about this apparatus to go on, on truck we got out there at the landfill, how you want to address that? Do you want to come?
Hello. This is a old leachate truck that we had, the, the tank that's on the leachate truck right now is leaking. So we need to get a new tank and, uh, according to ADQ, the, the, uh, holding tanks that we have down there at the landfill that the leachate. Pumps into, we have to have gauges and that's part of that invoice also. So as far as the tank, the gauges on the holding, on the holding tanks down there and the straps to strap the tank on. On the old leachate truck that we have. Just, I'm just trying to cut out, uh. Uh. I guess the fellow that's been hauling the stuff for us, we really, uh, in a financial situation that we can't pay them. So we need to start hauling our own leachate. That's about it.
What kind of condition is the truck, the leachate truck?
Well, we've been working on a truck that's causing us some overtime because we have to work on. The old, the old equipment that we have down there and the new equipment that we have, we have to keep it serviced. So we have a servicing plan for the new equipment and the old equipment, so we got to keep this stuff serviced.
But I mean, it's functional, it'll, it'll serve its purpose right now.
Yeah. Is it working? We can ensure that.
Yeah.
I need to, I need to. Is there, is there a motion to? Take the. This day was. Pay this invoice at that second.
Second.
Mr. Etherly and Mr. Dunn, second motion, is there any discussion? Not a public call. To pay this invoice to get.
Nine thousand five hundred.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that's it.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Miss Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Etherly?
Yes.
Mr. Saint Columbia? Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
All right, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Uh, there. The next question. Going to execute the second, Mr. Dunn wants to go to execute the second.
I do.
Mr. Dunn moves, go to execute the second, that second. The second, second motion is discussed.
Thank you, Captain.
Miss Davis?
Hold on, hold on, for the purposes of.
Uh. That's on the, uh, officers. Uh.
Right, for the purposes of.
Highness, detail.
High, high promotion, demotion.
Potential, I guess you say potential reinstatement? The officer.
High, high promotion or demotion?
High, high promotion, demotion.
I guess that'd be a rehire.
Just say I love.
Well, I just think the city attorney wants you to stay, you, you gotta stay the re.
Poten- potential rehire.
Sub reinstatement.
Consider the focus?
Yes.
It was subtle for you, why you act subtle?
Get the chop.
Four, I'm sorry, four of another. Three people?
Yes, yes.
Police department?
Yes.
So all the people that be present, the chief police, the the potential employees and the uh city council, everyone else has to leave. Only have these second.
Doctor Miller?
Yes.
Mister McSeetham?
Yes.
Mister Etherly? Five yes.
Yes, you said yes, ma'am, yeah.
Uh huh.
Do we go back in the regular session?
Mr. S. Columbia.
Yes.
The senior?
Yes.
Fellow?
Yes.
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 There was action taken. So, we're out of this session. The proper thing to do is to ask was any action taken during the session? No action was taken during the session. If there any action to be taken now. No action taken. And I believe that concludes the agenda for this week's meeting. And so, S. Columbia.
That's all. We adjourn.